Okay. Good evening, welcome. Please stand and join us.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast wide and recorded by W R P S Wayback on Podcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. It will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at WRPSRockland.com in 24 hours to its conclusion. As are other recently recorded meetings and community events, please go to WRPSRockland.com for further information. Okay, so we have a somewhat abbreviated agenda versus what we initially presented.
Mike, you have to turn your mic on.
I've got it in. I don't want to hear any of that.
So we have a somewhat abbreviated agenda versus what we originally presented. We're going to take it somewhat out of order. We're going to not do the Eagle Scout presentation for Phil Patterson tonight. We'll pick that up on a later date. We'll jump right up to number three on the agenda, the minutes, open session minutes of March 3, 2020.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. So the next on the agenda under new business would be a national grid project that's not going to be done tonight. Next on the agenda is the Rockland Special Education Toll Booth for Saturday, May 2, with a rain date of May 16. I would say that any motion to approve this would be subject to change based on whatever is going on as far as the coronavirus goes.
I will make a motion. This, the Rockland, the Rockland Sebag Toll Booth has been around for years. It's like, it's a great event and so I'm happy that we're able to support it. So I'd make a motion to approve with the, with a contingency that if anything changes relating to the coronavirus, that that would impact. But, but other than that, where should we go?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Next on the agenda, vote to authorize borrowing for school construction projects, the review and approval of note results. Treasurer John Elwood. John, come on up.
Actually, that's right. There's no microphone. Sure. You guys have the results that you're talking about. We set out a bid for $6 million in a bond.
In a ban upon authorization. And on anticipation note, it's the first step in the school building project that's coming due in August. In August, we'll go out and initiate, do a permanent bonding. I'm expecting to do about $30 million at that point and then do the rest a year or two later, once we know what the final amount is. But we did get excellent rates on this. As you probably all know, the interest rates have been basically in a free fall the last two months. So the timing of this really ended up in our benefit here. We ended up being able to borrow $6 million at a net interest cost of 0.8644%, so under 1%, which is unheard of. So that's outstanding. So we got, included in that, we got a $25,740 premium, which will more than offset the amount, the money that we have to pay to issue the ban. And then any leftover proceeds from the, the bond premium, we can take off of what we need to eventually borrow. So it's excellent news all around from a, from a borrowing point of view. So I just need you all to take a look at that page and a half long motion and then formally accept, formally accept it.
Nick can vote to approve the motion as presented. They don't.
That's what we all have done before is you've just said as presented rather than bore everybody to death with a long motion.
I would not want to have the chairman read it, so that's very good news.
I mean, you can read it, it's up to you.
No.
I would make a motion.
I defer to Mr. Mullen on this.
I would make a motion to accept and to approve the, the bond as proposed before this evening.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor to approve? Unanimous?
Thank you, John, for your work.
Okay. Next on the agenda, town meeting warrant. Doug?
Thank you. My plan was to go through the warrant in a lot of depth and detail tonight because according to our schedule at your next meeting on the first Tuesday in April would be when we present you with the final warrant and then you'd sign it and then we're off to the races, posting it, publishing it, et cetera. But given all the changes that have happened with the coronavirus that we're dealing with, I don't think we should spend that much time doing it tonight. I think it's possible our town meeting might even possibly be delayed. But I did want to include it in the packet so you can see it. So maybe I could, I'll just very, very briefly just highlight a couple of things. And I want to just start by, even though they always ask me not to do it, I'm going to do it anyways. Both Biz and then most recently in Biz's absence, Serena and the accounting department have just been an unbelievable help helping me do this. They've done a ton of work, not just on the accounting side, but literally putting the warrant together as well. So what you have is your first complete draft of the warrant, both the special and the annual. I want to stress that this is just our internal draft. I'm just sending this to John Clifford now, so John has not had a chance to review this. So I'm sure a bunch of the language is going to change. From the last list I gave you, we did move a number of the items off the special onto the annual because of our town charter requirement about emergency only items being on the special. So we think these are appropriate for the special. You'll see as you go through the warrant, there's a couple recommendations that I highlighted in yellow because those are ones where either the finance committee or the capital planning committee haven't taken a vote yet, not because they don't support the items, but just because in the finance committee's case, they wanted to wait until the capital committee voted on a couple of items and it was my fault. There was a little bit of lack of communication between me and the capital committee and a couple of things I thought were on the capital plan but really weren't. So the, the capital committee planned to have a meeting this Thursday night. They might cancel that, given everything we're dealing with. The law, so the long and the short of it is the recommendations that are highlighted in yellow, those will ultimately be favorable recommendations. They just have to have a, a meeting or two to get through that. The other thing I'd just point out is this does include a balanced budget, so we are balanced. It includes a good amount of capital purchases that we're using free cash to fund, which is always appropriate, one-time sources of revenue for one-time expenses. There's one or two salaries that we're making some market corrections that we've talked about here and we talked about in much greater depth even with the finance committee. And there's also a nice, long list of Community Preservation Act articles, which if you look on pages 13 and 14 of the document, you'll see all the CPA articles. And that's really wonderful. We, you know, Derek Yule came in before and presented them, so you're familiar with them, but I'm happy about that. And then the one correction I want to give from something I said earlier, I had earlier said there'd be no zoning on the warrant and that it's okay. Because what I was thinking was I was only thinking about regular zoning bylaws. I knew we were doing the floodplain bylaw update so we'd stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. I just forgot that the floodplain bylaw is technically incorporated into the zoning bylaws. So it's, will be nothing controversial. It's not like other zoning that people might disagree with. I think everybody will, I suspect unanimously support this, where everybody can take advantage of the National Flood Insurance Program. I'm happy to answer any questions you have looking at the list, but I think given tonight's agenda, maybe two things I should say. We should probably have a little bit more description from the highway superintendent on the proposed bylaw regarding preventing discharge onto the roads. We should probably have Dave come in and explain that in a little more detail, as well as Police Chief Llewellyn, the proposed fingerprinting bylaw for those that are coming door-to-door to homes. I think it would just make sense to get a little bit more detail on that. And then lastly, there is a petition article that was received with the right number of certified votes to ban single-use plastic bags in town. The individual that was the sponsor was planning on coming in tonight. I explained town hall is closed. I said we could hopefully have him in another night or do some kind of remote teleconference thing to have him present it in more detail. So I'd say maybe in the meantime, if you, if, as you look at the warrant, if you have any questions, just shoot me an email, give me a call and we'll, Jen and Serena and I and others will work with John Clifford and start finalizing the language.
Any questions, guys?
No, I just want to really, I just want to thank everyone, Doug, you know, from you, Jen, all, you know, in Biz and Serena, all, everyone. I mean, obviously when you start naming people, you leave people off inherently, but, you know, this was really an incredible effort, you know, and, oh, you know, and I'm really impressed, you know, I mean, obviously it's your first budget here, but the, oh, you know, but the amount of stuff that you were able to really reset, like in this budget, like what's proposed resetting and moving forward, I think it's incredible anyway, so I just want to thank you for that.
I appreciate it. Thanks. And, you know, there are a number of items that, that Biz and I really did want a better budget and we could do, we did a couple, but there's a lot we didn't do. So we have, this is going to be a multi-year process, but it's a step in the right direction. Thank you for saying that. And maybe while we have, and I should say for the public, we have our town council, John Clifford, on the phone, on speakerphone. Maybe it'd be helpful if I just asked John if he has any updated information from the state about potential town meeting timing issues, if that's all right with you. John, I don't know if you could hear what I just said, but do you have any update you could provide as far as town meetings and potential delays from the state perspective?
Hi Ken, Doug. Good evening, everybody. The, the governor filed legislation today to deal with some of the town meeting and budget issues. Basically, I think it'll give the moderator and the board some latitude to push town meeting back, to waive quorum requirements under certain circumstances. And it addresses one of the needs we're going to have coming up over the next several weeks, and that is if we can't hold our annual town meeting, then we need it on time, then we're going to need to reschedule it. I think it's the first Monday in May and that seems like that will be a reach to try to hold a big public meeting by that date. So I think there's still a fair chance it'll happen before June 30. If it doesn't happen before June 30, the governor's proposed legislation would actually allow towns to adopt the 1/12 budget, basically adopting a budget a month at a time on an interim basis. So that particular issue has been addressed. There was also some relief that the board's taking advantage of tonight with the open meeting law. There's still a number of unresolved issues, one of which is going to be the town election. We've had some communication with Donna over the weekend. I expect that the governor will push for legislation or issue an order that will allow us to postpone the annual town election. So I think that will be addressed. There's some other issues with regard to planning and zoning issues or something called constructive grant. If somebody files an application, there's statutory requirements to act on it within a certain time period. We're hoping to get legislation or relief under executive order that would basically remove the possibility of someone getting an approval for a project because the time had run during this emergency. So I think there's a lot of moving parts that, the one thing about this administration I have to say is that I think, and I think Doug and a lot of the town managers will bear this out with Karen Polito, there's been a lot more interaction on municipal government affairs and I think that's helped during this crisis.
Can you explain, John, the 1/12 budget issue that you mentioned?
The legislature has done this and the federal government has done it as well, I believe. Basically, you take 1/12 of this year's budget and probably the Board of Selectment would say, okay, we're going to approve that amount of money to, just to handle the month of July, rather than the whole year's appropriation. So it's really just taking a portion of what you'd normally spend, authorizing that again until you had an annual town meeting and you voted a full budget.
So it's a Board of Selectment vote?
I think that's the intention, yes.
Wild West. John, I just have one question. In terms of applicable collective bargaining agreements, obviously that budgeted amount, oh, you know, wouldn't, oh, arguably be sufficient to fund collective bargaining agreements that would increase, oh, on July 1? Oh, I mean, is everything prorated so you, so we would take that amount of money that was appropriated, oh, like in FY '20? Oh, you know, and just really disperse it accordingly then, I would assume?
I think what you basically do with the 1/12 budget is take an estimate of what you're going to spend over the course of the year and take 1/12 of that amount. You could factor in cost of living adjustments if they were due on July 1st. So I think there will be some latitude to handle those types of issues.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next on the agenda, coronavirus update. Doug?
Do we make a motion? Do we need to approve the budget? Do we vote?
I think we're going to wait, we'll let the finance committee put their recommendations in and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
So there's been a lot going on every day. It's, just this weekend was pretty monumental. I just did a, a very short video that WRPS has published on their YouTube channel, they're putting on cable access TV, and we pushed out on Facebook and Twitter and our website. So I thought I would just maybe read through some of those highlights because I, I think that's sort of the best summary, if that's helpful, but it's, I promise it's pretty quick. I want to confirm that as of right now, which is Monday, the 16th, you know, at 7:15 in the afternoon, at night, there's no confirmed or presumptive cases of COVID-19 in the town. So there are no confirmed cases in Rockland. The president's declared a national emergency and the CDC has been in large events of 50 people or more throughout the country for the next eight weeks. The state level's a little more restrictive. Non-emergency state employees are not going to work. All schools are closed for three weeks and the state has banned what was originally large gatherings of 250 people have now gone down to 25 people. So the state has banned any gathering, public or private, of 25 people or more. Restaurants are doing takeout only, no dining in. And as Jen and I were talking earlier, our local restaurants that do takeout are working closely with the Board of Health, so they understand all the proper precautions, so it is safe to get, it is safe to get takeout food from our local restaurants. As John Clifford just said a minute ago, the state is providing some open meeting law flexibility. So after this item, excuse me, you guys are going to, I think, likely approve a remote or confirm your prior approval of the remote participation policy. And there's different ways boards and committees can do it. It can just be on the phone, like we're doing with John, or there's technology we're likely going to get called Zoom, which a lot of schools are using, which is video teleconferencing. So all five of you and, and other staff could all loop in and it's, it's really simple. You have all the different, all the different screens on your, on your computer. So we'll likely be doing that soon. What we're being urged from the state and from council is to avoid any non-critical meetings at all. So we're, we're urging all boards and committees to only do this remote meeting if it's absolutely necessary. If a meeting does happen remotely, we will still post it on the town website, so it'll be public knowledge of it. And if we're able through this Zoom feature, we will try to record the remote meetings, but I want to confirm only we're, we're able, especially financially able to do that. Most importantly for our operations today, we, after meeting first thing this morning with our COVID-19 task force meeting and then including further meetings with all department heads, town council, confering with the chairman, we, we closed all town buildings today at noon. We're keeping as many, we're keeping staff in the buildings to keep our operations going. So when I talk about buildings, generally what I'm referring to is town hall, senior center, community center, library, and water, sewer, police, fire, and highway. So if, if anybody needs to conduct business with the town, they should call and town staff will do the very best they can to figure out a way to provide the service they need, either electronically, remotely, if there's some way they need to pass documents back and forth safely, we'll figure that out. Obviously, police and fire are responding to all emergencies, but the non-emergency kind of walk-up traffic, they're, they're not doing those kinds of permits and, and things like that. So if anybody has questions about any particular building, Monday to Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., they should call whatever department they're interested in to see what they're able to provide. Senior center hopefully will be able to provide some meals on wheels to needy seniors, so we're going to do what we can. So while the buildings are closed to the public, we are keeping staff in the buildings to provide core services. Regarding police and fire, they are updating some of their protocols with, with some medical calls. Fire department especially is doing a lot of extra EMS precautions to make sure that their personnel don't contract COVID because that would be disastrous. One of the main things, Chief Duffy, who's in the room here, who can add more to this later if we need, one of the main things he wanted me to communicate is if, if somebody feels like they may have contracted this, they may have the symptoms, a cough, shortness of breath, they should call their primary care doctor. Do not call 911. Don't call the fire department. That's tying up resources and potentially contaminating an ambulance when it's a non-emergent thing. They should call their primary care doctor and they can guide them through the process. As I mentioned earlier, we'll be discussing a declaration, an emergency, local emergency declaration after this on the agenda tonight, which I think is prudent to do, given the situation. We were just discussing the date of town meeting with, with town council as well as the election, so I won't get into that. All our information, in addition to these meetings and the videos, we're putting on the town website, www.rockland-ma.gov, Twitter, which is @RocklandTown, and Facebook, which is Town of Rockland. And we're also going to include links to other resources. We're putting a big image right on the homepage, a COVID image and a town seal, so it'll be obvious to everybody. And then I thought the last thing I just wanted to communicate to the public was if the people are age 60 or older, those with underlying chronic health conditions or weakened immune systems are most at risk, and the symptoms include all three of the following symptoms, fever, cough, and shortness of breath. And everyone can play a role in helping prevent the spread of the disease by washing our hands frequently for 20 seconds. And at a staff meeting, we were talking about this the other day. I didn't realize how long 20 seconds was. I have to confess, I wasn't really doing that, that long before, so I'm attentive to it now. Using alcohol-based hand rubs and gels, avoiding touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands, avoiding close contact with people who are sick, cleaning and disinfecting frequently touched objects and surfaces, avoiding touching, excuse me, avoiding sharing food utensils, containers, other personal items, covering coughs and sneezes, staying home with your, when you're sick, that's probably one of the most important things, and practicing social distancing, where individuals stay six feet or more from other people. And for those watching at home, you can see you guys are leading by example right now as well as the staff that are in the audience. And then one, one last thing related to this before I, I open it up to questions is, like many other parents, I'm going to be leaving first thing tomorrow morning to drive down to Georgia to pick up my son in college. I'll be out of the office for several days. I will have my phone, I'll have some limited access to phone and email. Jen Constable, the assistant administrator, will be here and will be available. So between the two of us, we should have things covered. So if you can't reach me, please don't hesitate to reach out to Jen. For those that are in the, in the room, because there's a lot of critical staff here, does anybody else have anything they'd want to add to what I was just mentioning?
I just want to add real quick that Doug had mentioned that, you know, there's like changes every 10 minutes. Well, at, I believe around 3 o'clock, Trump had shortened the, the social gathering to 10 people.
From the CDC, 50?
Yep, into the locals, 25, and now he's recommending 10.
Okay. The other material I put in your binder, just so you have it, I'll just going to whip through it really quick. There's a, a matrix that was put together. All the South Shore town managers are talking and emailing daily. This just shows what all the other towns are doing as far as closures and you can see what we're doing, closing to the public by keeping staff to try to preserve some core functions. That's what virtually all the towns are doing, so I wanted to highlight that. There's the Declaration of Emergency, which I would recommend that you formally vote and sign tonight. This was drafted with the help of John Clifford. And then just a screenshot from our website of where we're putting information. Two public documents we published online and put out by social media. One was last Friday, one was today about the building closures. And then a whole bunch of material that we received from the state regarding restaurants and bars, prohibitions on gatherings of those types of venues. So I just thought you should have all that information.
Anybody else in the audience? Chief, anything? Karen?
No, I just want to thank Doug and the task force for keeping us up to date and keeping the public informed about what's going on.
Yeah, and this is like truly a team effort. Like, I know I'm sitting up here and I'm like, hi, 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 all the time, but it's like, it is a huge group effort. Everybody in this room and all the other department heads, I couldn't thank them all more.
Thank you, guys.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want to say exactly the same thing.
So I just, I just want to reiterate what, what Doug has said and, you know, all of you guys in the audience are obviously taking this very seriously. And I just urge the residents at home that although we may not have any coronavirus confirmed cases in, in the town of Rockland, there's a lot popping up on the South Shore. And whether you believe it or not, it, it's real, it's out there, and it's up to us to take whatever precautions we can as a town. It's our, our job to protect the members of this community, the staff here at town hall and in the other municipal buildings in the town. So, you know, I applaud Doug for reaching out to me early this morning and making decisive plans to do so. This is real and it's going to go on for some time and it's, it's going to be difficult, but, you know, it's, you know, when you're members of a community, it's your responsibility, not just to yourself, but also to the other members within that community, to make sure that everybody is healthy and safe. So, you know, I know we can do this. This is not that tough of a challenge. Stay home, limit your, your public gatherings to 10, even though I guess we got 11 in the room, so somebody's got to leave. So, yeah. But that just got brought up, so we'll fix that going forward. But it, it's not to be taken lightly. And I know there's a, a lot of, you know, fun on social media with it, but it, it's a very serious thing and, you know, I've read several articles sent in from people from Italy that, that have said that where, where they were two weeks ago, where, you know, there's kind of joking around and, oh, it's not that bad or it's not going to happen here. And, you know, we all know what, what's going on in Italy right now. There's 16 million people that are quarantined and there's, I think, over 3,000 deaths as a result of this, this virus and it continues to grow at, at a rate that's just really uncontrollable. This is a global pandemic and I guess all I can say is just, you know, act accordingly. Act accordingly and take it seriously. So, if anybody has anything else?
Oh, you nailed it.
So if we have anything else, I'd like to move on to the Declaration of Emergency. Basically, we covered the reasons behind it, so I'll just read what, what the motion should be. "We, the Board of Selectment of the Town of Rockland, Massachusetts hereby declare that immediately and effective as of March 16, 2020, a state of emergency is declared to exist in Rockland. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the state of emergency no longer exists." Effective March 16, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of declaring a declaration of emergency for the town of Rockland? Mr. Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Irwin?
Yes.
And myself. So that's official.
We have an original in the office for you to sign after.
Anything else on the coronavirus?
No. The remote participation's the next item and it relates.
So next on the agenda is adopt slash confirm remote participation.
So it was, I didn't want to take the time to go through prior minutes and agendas. I was, I was not 100% sure if there was a, a current vote on this, so we thought it was just best to take another vote, just to be 100%. We have a, a good motion that Attorney Clifford wrote for us, which is in your binder. Again, what our plan is for now is only hold essential meetings and they can be done by phone, but we're trying to do video conferencing. I think we'll be successful. It's no surprise, everybody around the country and around the world is trying to sign up for video conferencing services, so they're a little backlog, you know? But I think we'll, I think we'll get there pretty quickly. So I would, I would recommend we do this and then we'll come up with protocol, you know, procedures and guidelines for exactly how we do it and, and document it.
I'll make a motion that the board of selectmen vote to allow remote participation in accordance with the requirements of 940 CMR 29.10 with the authorization or vote applying to all subsequent meetings of all local public bodies in the town of Rockland.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. So we will be in touch with more info on that.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay. Moving on. Hold business, FY '21 budget.
Again, I'm not going to really spend any time on this. Nothing substantively has changed since our last meeting. You'll see, if you just look at the front page, it's a, it's a balanced budget. You know, we did adjust a couple of salaries. We are taking a little bit more out of the OPEB trust to cover retiree health. Didn't make a lot of inroads in some of the areas we wanted to, but we feel confident this is a responsible, conservative budget. So I don't really have anything more to highlight now unless you wanted to get any particular details, because we've, we've gone over it a bunch in the past.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Next on the agenda, town administrators reporting correspondence.
I think the coronavirus summed it up for me tonight, so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and you've got a, a nice video that we'll share across all forums later today that should really just, really be the place where everybody goes for all the information. You pretty much handled everything. Like I said, you'll probably end up being a meme by the end of the day, you know?
I think so.
But we'll see.
Better you than me.
Oh, you probably are already. Actually, I know you are. I've seen a couple. All right. Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board of selectmen. Now, the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Mr. Mullen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, oh, you know, really, oh, really reemphasize everything we've been talking about tonight, when we think, oh, really what it's all about, and, oh, you know, when we break down our government, oh, you know, I can really, I can really look at the nuts and bolts of, like, our government and the impact on people, and, oh, and all the, and all the things that we regularly take for granted that we have, and that, oh, you know, really means something to people. I think we're seeing exactly what, oh, you know, a Rockland town government, oh, oh, really means and the value that we have to people right now. And, oh, you know, this is, oh, you know, all of us would be lying to say if it wasn't causing anxiety. And, oh, but at the end of the day, we have incredible working people. We have, we have incredible people working for the town. We have an incredible, oh, you know, a town in the first place that's made up of, oh, like, amazing people. And, oh, you know, as we go forward, we just need to remember, and we just need to, oh, really remind ourselves that we are one where, oh, you know, we have families, we have neighbors, and that we are all in this whole thing, oh, you know, together, and that we are going to come out of it together. It's going to be, as you mentioned, it's going to be hard, like, it's going to be difficult in a lot of ways, but, oh, oh, we are going to make it through it together, and hopefully sooner than later. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Simon?
So speaking to Mike's point about amazing people in our community, I had a few people reach out to me over the past few days, asking and seeing if there's anything they could do for the seniors in town. So I don't know if there's any need for the seniors at this point.
I would have any of them call the senior center, call the director of that, and see what she says.
Okay.
And we'll see, and she'll obviously consult with the board of health and see what's safe, you know, to do, but have them call. That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Kara. So, you know, I'll be quick. You know, I already kind of, you know, spoke on the coronavirus, but again, just reiterating, take care of each other, take care of, take care of our neighbors. If you have elderly neighbors, to Kara's point, check in on them, you know, see how they're doing. You know, there's, there's a lot of people that are going to be affected negatively by this. This is very early, very early in this process. Right now, the timeline for when this will end is undetermined. It's unknown, and it keeps changing by the hour. So whatever timelines that have been in place have changed already. So keep checking in. Don't forget about those that are most susceptible to this disease, and keep checking with them. Take care of each other. I do have an announcement that the local supermarkets that will stop and shop will have, be open from 6:00 to 7:30 every day for seniors only, anybody age 60 or older, to shop in a completely sanitized environment. So that, I think, goes into effect tomorrow, or Wednesday, rather. But, you know, there's little things like that that we can do as a community to come out of this together. And to Mike's point, we'll get, we'll get through this, but we just have to be vigilant and stay with it. You know, we're, we're a tough community, but, you know, we're also Americans, and Americans are tough people. We've been asked to do a lot worse, a lot more, you know, sacrifice a lot more than just stay home with your family. So take advantage of the time you have with your family, and, you know, we'll get through it together. So, thank you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, AFS CME Clerical, AFS CME Highway, Park Tree, AFS CME Joint Waterworks, Police, Police Superior Officers, and Fire.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, not to reconvene.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, and myself, yes. Thank you. Good night.